We're going to go ahead and get started. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Jorge Sotolongo, Dave Rosacker is our Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Current Planning Manager, Robert LaRoco, Planning Board Administrator, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Debbie Hightower is our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have already been heard or perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us, and in the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information, and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder in this room. And there are no changes to the consent agenda, so I'm going to get started with those. Okay, Agenda Item Number Five. Case C-11-21-164, applicant Redwood USA LLC. It is on for approval. Request approval of a PUD Plan Unit Development Overlay District. This was laid over from our July meeting. Location: Northeast of Sorensen Parkway and Winninghoff Road. Does there anyone wish to have this removed? You do? Okay, it will be removed, and we are going to hear that with Case Two also. That's an administrative. We'll take both cases at the same time. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Ten. Case C-3-21-291, applicant Planning Department. On behalf of the City of Omaha, it is on for approval. Request approval of an amendment to the future land use element of the City of Omaha Master Plan from open space and high-density residential to low-density residential. Location: North of Vernon and Forest Lawn Avenues. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twelve. Case C-3-21-295, C-10-21-296, C-12-21-297, applicant HRC Arcadia Ridge LLC. It is on for approval. Request preliminary plat approval of Arcadia Ridge, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R4, along with approval of a variance to the present development zone boundary of the urban development element of the city's master plan. Location: Northwest of Kansas and Laurel Avenues. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Fourteen. Case C-10-21-302, C-12-21-303, applicant Michael Maylie Real Estate LLC. It is on for approval. Request preliminary plat approval of Sky Ridge Villas, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from DR to DR and R5. Location: 1999 Veterans Drive. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Fifteen. Case C-10-21-304, C-12-21-305, applicant Players Club Golf LLC. It is on for approval. Request preliminary and final plat approval of Deer Creek Highlands Replat 1, a minor plat outside city limits with rezoning from DR and R4 to DR and R4. Location: Southwest of 126th and Greby Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Sixteen. Case C-10-21-314, C-12-21-315, applicant Paul Smith, Manager, Millwork District 1 LLC. It is on for approval. Request preliminary plat approval of Millwork Commons Replat 2, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from CBD and HI to CBD with a waiver to Section 5384D lot frontage, along with approval of the Neighborhood Conservation and Enhancement Overlay District and repeal of the ACI-1 Overlay District. Location: North of 13th and Nicholas Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Seventeen. Case C-10-13-180, C-10-17-129, C-12-17-130, applicant Jeremy Shepherd Fountain 2 LLC. It is on for approval. Request final plat approval of Fountain Ridge West Lot 2, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to MU, along with approval of a major amendment to the Mixed Use District Development Plan for Fountain Ridge West. Location: Southwest of 193rd and Davenport Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Eighteen. Case C-10-21-306, applicant Jeremy Carlson. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GC to NBD. Property is located within an ACI-1 Overlay District. Location: 3724 Farnham Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty. Case C-10-21-308, applicant Dr. Trino Nuno. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GC to NBD, along with approval of the Neighborhood Conservation and Enhancement Plan. Location: 2002 Vinton Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-one. Case C-10-21-309, applicant West Roads Investors LLC. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from CC and GC to CC and GC. Property is located in an ACI-3 Overlay District. Location: Southwest of 102nd and Nicholas Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-three. Case C-11-20-126, applicant Bolt Capital LLC. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the Plan Unit Redevelopment Overlay District. Location: 13325 Miller Ave. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-four. Case C-11-21-313, applicant Gregorio Pacheco Guerrero Uptown Properties LLC. Request approval of a PUR Plan Unit Redevelopment Overlay District. This was laid over from our August meeting. Location: Northwest of 30th Avenue and Mason Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-five. Case C-8-21-310, applicant Lisette Christian. It is on for approval. Request approval of a special use permit to allow daycare general in the R4 District. Location: 4719 O'Hearn Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-six. Case C-7-21-311, applicant Mark Ruhr Magoo LLC. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit assumed to allow auto repair services in the CC District. Property is located in an MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location: 3820 North 90th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-seven. Case C-14-21-312, applicant Planning Department. On behalf of the City of Omaha, it is on for approval. Request approval of the vacation of an alley east of South 31st Street, south of A Street, abutting lots 1 and 14, block 217, South Omaha City Lots Addition. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion for those consent items that are on for approval?
Motion approved. Cases number 10, 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 20, 21, 23, 25, 26, and 27.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six-zero.
Do we have a motion for the case on for layover?
Move to layover, case number twenty-four.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six-zero.
Those cases that we just went over that were on consent, no further action will be taken today. If you were here for one of those cases, you are welcome to stay, or you are free to leave, so. We'll get started with the administrative part of our agenda. The administrative part of it, there will be no opportunity for public testimony, but we did have a case taken off, so Case Two and Five, we will open up for public testimony. Okay? Agenda Item Number One. Case C-10-21-169, C-12-21-170, applicant BSR FW LLC. Request final plat approval of Daybreak Lots 1 through 117, Outlots A through C, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R4. Location: Northeast 192nd and 4th. Eric?
Yeah, so this is the first phase of Daybreak. 117 single-family residential lots, three outlots. The preliminary plat was recommended for approval by the Planning Board on July 7th and approved by City Council on August 31st. As I mentioned, this is the first phase. It is consistent with the approved preliminary plat. There is a temporary access easement that is granted, and Street A has been removed to allow temporary access to 192nd Street until future phases are final-platted. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R4, and approval of the final plat subject to the two conditions in the recommendation report.
Any comments or questions from the Board? Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R4, and approval of the final plat subject to the two conditions outlined in the recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six-zero.
We're going to start with Agenda Items Number Two and Five. Like I said, we're going to take Number Two off of the administrative only, and we'll get started here. Agenda Item Number Two. Case C-10-21-162, C-12-21-163, applicant Redwood USA LLC. Request final plat approval of Redwood Winninghoff, a subdivision outside city limits along with rezoning from R4 to R6. Location: Northeast of Sorensen Parkway and Winninghoff Road. And we'll take Number Five with that also. Agenda Item Number Five is Case C-11-21-164, applicant Redwood USA LLC. Request approval of a Plan Unit Development Overlay District, laid over from our July meeting. Location: Northeast of Sorensen Parkway and Winninghoff Road. Are you the applicant?
No.
Are you the applicant?
No.
Okay. All right, it's the applicant. You want to come forward, give your name and address?
Good afternoon. Paul DeCreyf, Redwood, 7007 East Pleasant Valley Road, Independence, Ohio. It's a pleasure to be back here, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, are there any opponents wishing to speak? You can come forward and give your name and address, please.
When we came to the first meeting...
We need your name and address, please.
Pardon?
Name and address.
Oh, Tammy Lantis, 8413 Reed Street.
Thank you. Go ahead, Tammy.
And my backyard is going to be to where the development is happening. We went and were promised a single-story housing, single-family, and now they're wanting to...
Tammy, you can place that on the overhead projector there, and Eric will show you.
I've never done this before.
That's all right, Eric's going to show you how. There you go. Give it a turn.
And this is what we were promised, and now they're wanting to build four, five, and six-story townhouses. We were okay with this, but we feel that we were lied to now that they're coming up to the...
Sorry to interrupt. They're actually, the number of units would be attached side by side. They're still proposing the same height of the units, so...
Okay.
Just to clarify that. Go ahead.
Because we were told differently, so... And then we were also concerned that with the multiple units, our taxes are going to go up, we're going to have more traffic, and we've got a lot of kids in our neighborhood. We would like to see it stay this height with these houses instead of being the multiple.
Okay. Did you want to say anything else?
I have looked up online, and they said that there's more crime in areas with multiple housing. There'll be more noise, and then also, they said something about more poverty, but I don't think, I wasn't sure about that part of it. So, we've also, in Virginia, had a proposal similar to this, and they declined it in January because of the mention that I mentioned, the more crime, more noise, and they declined that, and made it, went ahead and kept it as a R4 instead of up to a R6. So, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Any other opponents wishing to speak? Come forward and give your name and address, please.
Jessica Apler, 8409 Reed Street.
I didn't hear your first name?
Jessica Apler.
Okay, thank you.
8409 Reed Street. So, like she said, I will be, this will be my backyard. They're going to be 20 feet away from my yard. I'm going to have parking lot right in the back of my yard, no privacy, and more housing development, so I'm a very private person. I bought my house four years ago, and I don't know. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, Jessica. Any other opponents?
Hi, my name is Linda Zinke. I actually live in the Glenbrook subdivision, which is to the east end of this development. I have some questions also about how close they're going to get to our houses. Behind my house, there's a walking trail. The walking trail is on the map, but it looks, from my, the south side of the walking trail to where I think is Winninghoff's line, where the fence is, they're at 24 feet. I went and measured it this morning, but the map looks like it's coming right up against that walking trail. And so, I guess I was not very clear about exactly how close to... That walking trail is really, really close to my house. The space in that 24 feet is full of trees and shrubs, and it's really a habitat for a lot of birds and bees and butterflies and wild turkey and all kinds of things that live there. That, my question was, is that going to be gone? Or, because the city's been mowing it, so I assumed it was city ground, but has part of that been incorporated into this development?
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Any other opponents wishing to speak?
Hello, my name is Katrina Mosby, 8819 Wyoming Street. I reside in the Glenmore-Glenbrook area directly west of this proposed development. We did not receive the notice about this because we're across the street, so I was just learning about some of these things on Glen, on the Nextdoor app and the agenda. I just have some questions that I would like some answers to. I've received a lot of hearsay and conflicting information. So, that first question is the intent of the housing. There, I can't, I've heard information as far as maybe these were designed or designed to cater toward elderly residential housing, mixed affordable housing, specifically from the Omaha Housing Authority to relocate residents of the south-side terrace. So, I would just like some clarification on, as far as the intent of the intended residence of this, if they were for sale or for rent. And then also, as far as traffic, the, what is planned for traffic control, that intersection of Winninghoff and Sorensen, right there by Northwest High School, I travel it six times a day, that light in the one lane, the roundabout, that has been a very deadly intersection. There's been several traffic fatalities there. The timing of the lights, just planning in and out of the residential neighborhoods, both Somerset, this development, and Wells, the entrance into Glenmore Turnbridge, where I reside.
Okay, thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Paul, did you want to come up and address some of these issues, or all these issues that you can?
Sure. Sure. Thank you again. We're glad to hear... Sorry. Oh, sure. Paul DeCreyf, 7007 East Pleasant Valley Road, Independence, Ohio, representing Redwood. I'm joined here today by John Coolidge with Lamprey Neerson. We might have him come up and talk about some of the distances of our development, but I wanted to assure our new neighbors, and we're very grateful for the questions. We are a long-term owner, and we don't sell. We are market rate, not affordable housing. We are rental. This is because of the design and the style of our buildings geared toward a much more senior profile. We have zero grade entry levels, lever door handles, as a reminder from our last presentation, so it naturally attracts older residents. About 70% of our tenancy in our 13,000-unit portfolio is seniors or empty nesters. The other interesting part of that is our next noticeable cohort of resident is third shifters. So, it's people who are looking for peace and quiet. So, we are a very quiet neighborhood. In terms of traffic, I heard one question about that. We have provided some additions, some presentations before about traffic. We are a lot less intense use than even single-family or for-sale townhomes. We don't attract the children, so residents don't have to go out in the morning and in the afternoon. In terms of setbacks, I'm going to ask John Coolidge to step up and address some of that, and I think that was, that'd be the only thing.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Paul.
Good afternoon. My name's John Coolidge. I'm an engineer with Lamprey Neerson, 14710 West Dodge Road, and here on behalf of the applicant. So, just quickly, so here's, here's the aerial photo of our site, and we are taking the full parcel here, bounded on the west by Winninghoff Road, the south by Sorensen, but more practically by the existing creek, and then the north to the single-family housing, and the east to undeveloped parcels. So, there was one question about existing trees and topography. So, there's a sliver of land that's controlled right here, is platted as a pseudo-park or City of Omaha parcel that has a trail through it. Our development does not extend into that park, so I'll change to a copy of the plat or the development plan. So, it's a little difficult to see, but you can see this little area right here. That's a heavily treed area. We're going to maintain that and maintain the existing trail there. In addition to that trail, we're also going to provide some connectivity from the existing street and a new trail located here. We were maintaining pretty significant setbacks with our buildings from all the, from all the property lines, approximately 40 feet here on the east side, a minimum of 30 feet on the north side with some, some more. We're going to leave some existing trees that are right on the fence, as well as planning a new buffer of trees. In terms of a parking lot, we are going to have some four or five stalls up here for off, you know, visitor parking, but that wouldn't be an intense use. Every unit does have two garage spaces and two driveway spaces, so there's four spaces per unit. Again, the layout of these buildings, they're typically fourplexes and sixplexes, but, you know, they are one-story high, and we are going to build the... I mean, this is, is what they will look like when they're finished. So, again, if there was some misconception about the height, it's a fourplex, as Eric pointed out, that's, that's horizontal, not vertical. So, we believe that, we did a presentation, Paul did a great presentation last time, and we think this is a quality product that's really pretty low-density for the area, and we've done our due diligence in trying to maintain setbacks, and I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you, John.
Just finishing up to, to, two points. We are, our rents projected here, we've discussed that before, roughly around $1,700 a month, add taxes or add insurance and other fees in there, and this equates to a value of somewhere around, equivalent of about a $350,000 home. So, these are, again, market rate apartments. And again, we're excited to be here, and we're, we'd love to get to know our neighbors. In terms of, last point, we did do a, during COVID, we did do a Zoom neighborhood meeting too, so we're, we notified folks, and we had plenty of people show up, and...
How many people were on that Zoom meeting? How many people were on that Zoom meeting?
On the meeting was probably six or seven in total of the neighbors. It was, it was during, it was an evening meeting. We made sure that we got, gave people an opportunity to get home. We did notify everyone as prescribed.
Okay. What's the square footage going to be?
So square footages in this development range from just under 1,300 square feet to just over 1,600 square feet. So that rent that I quoted would be for the smallest of the units. They would go up from there.
Okay. Yeah, I like the concept. I think the concept is great for that neighborhood. It just, it flows really nice, so great concept.
Thank you again.
Paul, just a second. If you wouldn't mind, after the vote, if you would, if you're outside, if any of you opponents would like to talk to Paul and you, you know, want to exchange information or whatever for future questions, would you mind doing that?
Not at all. We welcome that. Thank you.
All right, thanks. And any other comments, questions from the board? Eric, did you want to add?
Yeah, so we have two items that the board is voting on today. Agenda item number two is specifically the final plat. You know, any modifications that were required from the preliminary plat, such as moving Whitmore Street approximately 150 feet further north to align with future access to the site west of Wenninghoff Road, that was done. So for specifically item number two, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from R4 to R6. Approval of the final plat, subject to meeting the three conditions in the recommendation report prior to forwarding to city council.
Do we have a motion?
I would move approval of the rezoning from, let me get the right one here, sorry. Move approval of the rezoning from R4 to R6, approval of the final plat of the Redwood-Wenninghoff, subject to meeting the three conditions outlined in the recommendation report prior to forwarding the request to city council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, uh, Lisa. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six zero.
All right, Eric, agenda item number five?
Yeah, so regarding the PUD, I don't think there's anything I specifically need to point out. The, any required changes as a result of the laid-over PUD at the July meeting have been adequately addressed, and staff recommends approval of the PUD, subject to providing an acceptable revised landscape plan prior to forwarding to city council.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six zero.
Okay. Moving on, we're still on the administrative part of the agenda. Item number three, case C12-21-217, applicant MHO Zone 2 LLC, request. Final plat approval of Maverick Landing, a subdivision inside city limits, location northeast of 72nd and Grover Street. Eric?
Yeah, so this preliminary plat was approved by city council on October 5th of this year. The final plat is very consistent with the approved preliminary plat. There are six lots proposed, five of those office or commercial lots west of the new 70th Street that will be extended from Grover to Haskell Street. On the east side of that new 70th Street will be the sixth lot, which will be proposed for multifamily residential. Public Works is finalizing the review of the traffic study, but it appears that the access to 72nd Street will be acceptable. There is the requirement that the plat will need to designate the existing OPPD transmission line easement. Staff recommends approval of the final plat, subject to including OPPD's transmission line easement along 72nd Street on the submitted Mylars, as well as submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to city council.
Okay. Comments or questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the final plat of Maverick Landing, subject to the, subject to including OPPD's transmission line easement along 72nd Street on the submitted Mylars, as well as submittal of an acceptable subdivision agreement prior to forwarding this request to city council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six zero.
Agenda item number four, case C10-21-215. C12-21-216, applicant Drew Layer, Habitat for Humanity of Omaha. Request final plat approval of Blue Stem Prairie, a subdivision inside city limits, with rezoning from R3, R4, and R6 to R5. Location, north of Vernon and Forest Lawn Avenues. Eric?
Yeah, so the preliminary plat came to this board back in August and then approved by city council on October 5th. The final plat is very consistent with the approved preliminary plan. The future land use amendment was on the consent agenda and was approved just shortly ago. There's some finalization of the tree mitigation plan that will need to occur before city council. We have a meeting set up, city staff and the applicant, and to discuss the final tree mitigation plan and what ultimately, ultimately that looks like. We also need some additional information and discussion on the proposed geothermal field that proposed in Outlet B to make sure that we have all the acceptable information and everything is encapsulated within an appropriate outlet. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from R3, R4, and R6 to R5, and approval of the final plat, subject to the three conditions in the report prior to city council.
Any questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
Yeah, first, I guess I just want to say just publicly, one of the good things is to see this project moving forward on this site. I'd recommend, or I'm moving for approval...
Rezoning from R3, R4, and R6 to R5, and the approval of the final plat, subject to addressing the two conditions of the staff report prior to forwarding to the city council. Three.
Three conditions.
Three conditions, sorry.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six zero.
We're going to take agenda items number six and 11 together, and this will be part of the public meeting. Agenda item number six, case C8-21-178, C8-21-179. Applicant Alyssa Garth, request approval of a special use permit to allow outdoor sports and recreation in the DR District and to allow recreational club in the DR District. This was laid over from our August meeting, location, south of 206th and Pacific Street. And agenda item number 11 is case C10-21-177, C12-21-292. Applicant Alyssa Garth, request preliminary and final plat approval of Pacific Reserve Replat 1, a minor plat outside city limits with a waiver to section 5384D lot frontage, along with rezoning from DR and R5 to DR. Location, south of 206th and Pacific Streets. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Gentlemen, Douglas Streason, 10836 Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. And here to answer any questions you may have. I think this, this case has spent quite a bit of time in front of you already. So I don't want to take any more of your time if there's specific questions. Be happy to answer those. All of the conditions that are laid out from the planning department are acceptable to the client, and with that, I'd request your approval. Thank you.
Doug? Just a... I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but I'm concerned about, I know it's in the recommendations, but I'm still concerned about parents picking up, not going through a shuttle bus and driving in and stacking on Pacific Street traffic. Do you understand that if that is violated, that your client will be back up here and...
Correct. I understand the need for the special use permit. If you look through the operation statement, we specifically address that issue, that that, we're going to be paying attention to that, and we're going to do whatever we can to prevent parents from doing the drop-offs and use the shuttle service. The parking is only for employees. I share your concern, Mr. Rosenbaum. You can only do so much with certain humans. We'll do, we'll do whatever we can to try to keep that from happening.
The basketball courts, those are practice only, no, no, what's that, league games or anything like that, just practice only?
That's my understanding. This is more like a camp. It's not a competition facility where you have teams coming in, shuttling in and out all the time. It's, it's more for school kids to come and have a place to practice, learn their, learn their skills, perhaps work with coaches, as opposed to seeing one team after another coming in and out of there.
Any additional questions, or Doug? Thank you. Thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Adam Raymakers, 1413 North 182nd Street, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. It's a really exciting project, one that I've spent a lot of time on, working on. You know, we, we've taken a lot of time to make sure that we've been communicating well with the city, making sure that all the objectives are met. The purpose of this building is to bring, you know, kids from five to 16 that need a place to go, you know, shoot hoops, work out, learn, do multiple things on a camp setting. You know, obviously, the parking and the stacking is very important, and that's something we're going to take a lot into account on in the final designs before we put, you know, final plans in front of the city for permitting. But at the end of the day, we just want a place that, you know, kids can come, hang out, do the things they need to do, get into an environment that's supportive, and provide that for the Elkhorn community. So here to answer any questions you have, but really just here to show support for the project.
Just a quick question for you. So in the, in the report here, it says that 200 children maximum in this, which is fine. But how are you going to control that? Are you going to have, are you going, how are you going to cap that? Because the demand might be greater than, than what your capacity is calling for. So how are you going to control the number of kids that can...
Sure. I mean, operationally, you know, adjacent, Alyssa also has the daycare system, and it's really no different for that, right? You know, the demand for a lot of these facilities are, the demand is more than what you can actually provide. We want to be strategic and work well within the community for those. You know, I'm sure it's, a lot of it's first come, first served basis, but we want to be sure that we don't overextend ourselves operationally in the facility. So, you know, if it, if it's under the 200 and we provide a better service, that's great. But we want to make sure that we're providing the right amount of, you know, staff with the right amount of kids for that facility, so...
And I ask that just to kind of as a follow-up from Mr. Rosenbaum's question, too, because if you exceed that 200 kid maximum, children maximum, right, that might contribute to some, some more heavy traffic volume in that area as well, which would be a concern for all of us.
Yep, yep, completely get it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents wishing to speak? Hi, Kate, come on up.
Good afternoon. Kathleen Foster, I reside at 20806 Buckskin Trail. I think I'm not really an opponent, just not necessarily a proponent either, just an interested party. I reside right here. I've had a chance to speak to Mr. Streason and also Thomas Garth about this. I think it's a, it's a very nice project that they have proposed here. Just had a couple of questions. In particular, living here, I get, this is the Elkhorn Valley View Middle School. We get a lot of trash that just by way of the wind ends up along the, the street here. If this is going to be outdoor, just like to bring that to their attention, that that's, it's always something that's being picked up. I'd like to ask a question about a footpath here. Right now, there is a, and this may be better under, I think, number 10 for the, the plat approval, but we have a sidewalk right here that goes to pretty much nowhere. It goes down into the creek and it stops. And there's the sidewalk that has been installed here. There's no sidewalk here. And I'm wondering what, if the sidewalk with the construction of the building here will extend down to this creek and then essentially go nowhere. Is there a proposal for a footpath that crosses this creek here? Seems like it would make a lot of sense. It would be just, it provide a safe path for the kids. I think it's beneficial for the school, but if this is going to be a business that operates through the summer and targets a population of kids ages five to 15, they're certainly old enough to walk and ride their bikes, not old enough to drive. But I'd like to know if there's a proposal for that. There's traffic there all the time, foot traffic, that the kids are hugging up against the, really the, the barrier there on both sides, on the street and on the south side of that barrier where they could, it just, it's a, it's just a dangerous area. I appreciate what the board has done with regards to the conditions, the ten conditions for both the permits as a homeowner there and as a parent, the noise, the activity. This targeting age group of five to 15 doesn't bother me. Sounds like the time for the operation, 8:00 to 5:00 p.m., I appreciate that as well. So there's not a noise concern, not adult activity, and the restrictions with regards to no league play. The traffic is always built up here, up to 204th, so I appreciate the restrictions that you guys have placed on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Any other opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Doug, did you want to come forward and address Katie's questions?
Certainly. I think with this being a school kids' facility, the sidewalks would make perfect sense. In addition to the traffic concerns, it would seem to be, to me, to make sense to provide pedestrian access as well as we could. That being said, I don't think it's any mystery that the traffic in that area is going to get heavier and heavier. So we want to look at it carefully to make sure that we don't put kids in a situation where they're more in harm's way rather than less. My recollection is Pacific Street is a non-curbed, two-lane section, maybe three lanes if you're close enough to that left turn there. So we want to be careful not to introduce young pedestrians into a situation like that. But I think just from the operations of the facility, and remembering way back to when I was that age, it'd sure be nice to be able to just walk down there and, and do as Mr. Raymaker said, shoot some hoops or work out.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Nope. Eric, did you want to?
I think, just from the operations of the faci...
Okay. Yeah, I'll start with the side, yeah, I'll start with sidewalk question. You know, this, this site has been around for a couple of years. We've had discussions on this operation now dating back to 2019. So there have been a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions. I know planning and public works staff discussed the potential for a sidewalk over the bridge connecting to the neighborhood and the school to the west. However, in those discussions and analysis, we did not see that it was financially feasible at this time without a street, without a bridge widening project. And if Public Works wants to speak to that, they, they can definitely come down, but that's my recollection that it was not feasible based on the existing right-of-way. In the steep grade, it really falls off to that creek there right now. So we would love a sidewalk, but based on the current conditions, we did not think that was feasible. So, yeah, I guess I'll, I'll go on the record. There's, there's a lot in the recommendation report. There's been a lot of different recommendation reports. The project has somewhat evolved with certain elements throughout the, the past couple of years. But there's basically two special use permits, one, excuse me, one for the day camp operation and then one for the recreational club. The day camp, we want to make sure that there is no queuing or parking on Pacific Street as a result of the operation. We are supportive of the operation because... operation because of the operation plan described in the access utilizing the existing middle, middle school parking and shuttling from there, as well as an additional elementary school if needed. So, before proceeding to city council, we need to ensure that the documentation and agreements with Elkhorn Public Schools are, are, you know, very locked in to make sure that the operations plan as proposed is followed, because we, we cannot have backing up or queuing on to Pacific Street as a result of this operation. I won't get into too many details about how the plan has changed. As far as the recreational club, this is for a nonprofit group to utilize the indoor basketball courts and indoor facility at times when the, when the day, when the, when the camp is not in operation. This specifically states there are no tournament or games to be played at the facility. It's for practice only, and we are comfortable with that as long as those operation plans are followed. We are recommending that a major amendment comes back before the planning board, two years' time from the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, just kind of as a check-in and making sure that the operation is operating as it has been proposed. We are, there is some sewer work that is being realigned with the plating, and we'll have to continue to work with the development team on those. I don't know if the board has any specific questions or if there's any details that you want me to get into beyond that.
I, you know, we were, in our pre-meeting, we were worried about stacking on Pacific Street. Worried about safety, safety for kids, safety for people driving kids. It seems like that, that sidewalk made a lot of sense. If you could, if kids could leave that facility and walk over to the school parking lot and be picked up or whatever, because they're going to use the school parking lot anyways. It makes sense, but do we want to have Ryan Haas come down?
Well, we, we definitely could. When I reviewed this, I, I know it's different, but I kind of took the stance of, of comparing it to a city-run camp, Hummel Park, that my kids have gone in and, and basically, apples to oranges, but as a comparison, you know, the parents drop off their kids at a site to be bused down to Hummel. You know, the parents aren't coming and picking up from Hummel Day Camp. Now, I know that's, that's a large difference and it's, it's a larger area. Yes, the parents are dropping off to a nearby site, but I don't think you just want kids coming and going. That's not the impression I get. This is a camp that they're needing to watch the children. You don't just want kids walking to and from. I, that would be my impression.
But we know how, what reality is going to be, and the reality's going to be, somebody's late, they get dropped off at the parking lot, and they're going to try to run down the street to, you know, the camp.
Yes, I would understand. There would be some individual parents that drop off or pick up, but it's really based on the operations of, of the plan. And if the facility says, no, we do not want you to do that, yes. If there's an occasional emergency, there is room, there is parking lot on the site. We don't want two hundred kids being dropped off or picked up and, at the front of the building. That's not acceptable. But yes, I understand there's probably going to be an occasional parent coming, you know, going. That'd be my response. I don't know if Ryan, if you want to talk about the sidewalk and the bridge.
I know, we have our operational, yeah, recommendations, so.
Ryan, did- Let me interject. Doug mentioned the fact, and if you look at this area, Greg, Pacific Street significantly narrows there because of that, that bridge.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's a tube or a bridge or what is that? I don't, I usually live there, but I should know.
It's a culvert.
But anyway, it significantly narrows, and, and there's a severe falloff from the edge of the road. In fact, there isn't even a breakdown lane at all there. And so, you'd literally have to extend that tube or bridge or whatever it is
Yeah.
in order to accommodate and keep safe distance for that, for path. So, you'd literally, a better option would be to build a bridge for kids.
A bridge, yeah.
So, that's a whole nother thing.
Yeah. Ryan, you want to just give us your input?
Yeah, Ryan Haas at the Public Works Department. It is a box culvert. The widening of it to accommodate a sidewalk would be a substantial capital project. It would either have to be a standalone project to accomplish the crossing, the pedestrian crossing, or it'd have to be done in conjunction with a ultimate improvement of Pacific Street to the urban standard, three-lane cross-section for arterial street out in that area with curbs and, curb and gutter and sidewalk. And we don't have a project identified at this time. There, there's a history there. We, we've known about this issue since the school opened up. The requirement at the time, and I, I don't remember if this was approved, if the school was approved under Elkhorn's jurisdiction or just after Omaha it had annexed, but that's a standard requirement along arterial streets, build sidewalk along your frontage. Unfortunately, the frontage led right down to the creek and stopped. So, yeah, it leads down to basically where there's not a crossing. So, in hindsight, maybe it would have been better off to just forego the sidewalk on the middle school side as well, so we didn't lead kids down to the, where there's no effective, effectively no way to get across safely. So, that was kind of on this side, on the east side. That was the decision we made is, let's not repeat that again and lead kids down to where there's no crossing essentially, or any pedestrian. So, that's why we're foregoing the requirement of sidewalks west of 207th Circle or 206th Circle.
See, Ryan, as I look at this, this design here of the, of the entryway coming in here, I can't, I can't read exactly how many feet that is, but do you know how many cars would be able to be stacked along that, and along that area before they start leading onto Pacific Street?
We use a nominal distance of twenty-five feet per vehicle with our driveway regulations, the drive-through stacking requirements. And that's, you know, your typical passenger vehicle's not going to be nearly that large, but you got to think about leaving space in front and behind as people queue and, and drive in that kind of an operational mode. So, whatever that distance is divided by twenty-five and you get the number of vehicles, you could realistically-
Yeah, I don't know how many feet that is.
It wouldn't be a lot.
I'm, I'm always thinking of like elementary schools where people are waiting to get, pick up their kids, and then they just wait.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, and that's, in that context, it's, it's hundreds of feet.
Yeah.
And, and that's not what we're expecting or, nor is that what we want. I think it would be beneficial, and if you have more questions for Ryan, absolutely. But, you know, it's, it's a requirement of the applicant to follow their operations plan. And I think, you know, maybe pulling Doug up here and, and saying that the organization needs to regulate the drop-off of the parents and, and not allow that to happen. And, you know, if, if they're doing so, I mean, they, they need, they need to regulate that, basically, so.
And if they don't, we have the ability to, to correct that.
Absolutely. Yeah, there's a, there's a section in the zoning code that specifically states if you're not in compliance with the conditions of a special use permit, city council, or the planning board has the ability to bring the applicant back before the board or the city council for potential revocation of that use permit.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Any other comments or questions? Did you want to add any more, Eric, or?
Just the recommendations.
Yeah, go ahead.
Further dialogue.
Well, we've already, I already brought it up to Doug that, you know, if there's violations in the operation, and he understands that, so I don't think we need to do that, do that again. And so, yeah, I think we're ready for the recommendation.
Okay, so specifically for agenda item six, which is the special use permit, there are two different use permits. So, I will make a recommendation on the first use permit. You would have a vote, and then I would have a recommendation on the second use permit, which have the same conditions. But staff recommends approval of the special use permit to allow outdoor sports and recreation in the DR District, subject to the eleven conditions in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion?
A motion for approval of the special use permit to allow outdoor sports and recreation in the DR District, subject to the ten conditions in the recommendation report.
No, we have eleven.
Oh, eleven, sorry.
We got a revised report, so.
Sorry, eleven.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six zero.
Regarding the second use permit, staff recommends approval of the special use permit to allow a recreational club in the DR District, subject to the eleven conditions in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion?
Motion approved, special use permit to allow recreational club in the DR District, subject to eleven items in the staff report.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will, will you record the vote, please?
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris? Kate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Six zero, approved.
Okay, for agenda item number eleven.
For agenda item eleven, staff recommends approval of the waiver to Section 53-84D lot frontage, approval of the rezoning from DR and R5 to DR, approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the five conditions, approval of the final plat, subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval, and provision of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to city council.
Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the waiver to Section 53-9 or 84D lot frontage, approval of the rezoning from DR and R5 to DR, approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the five conditions outlined in the report, and approval of the final plat, subject to the conditions of the preliminary plat, and provision of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to ordering the request onto city council.
Agreed.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you call the vote, please?
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six zero.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Moving on, agenda item number seven, case C3-96-276. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of an amendment to the downtown northeast redevelopment plan to expand the plan area. Location, an area generally bound by Chicago Street on the north, Seventeenth, Seventeenth Street on the east, Dodge Street on the south, and Twentieth Street on the west. And Eric, you're presenting.
Yes. Yeah, so this amendment to the downtown northeast redevelopment plan, this plan was originally approved back in nineteen ninety-six, and it has had several amendments since that time, which include major redevelopment projects, including the Omaha World-Herald Building, First National Bank, Union Pacific, and the Capital District. It was last amended in 2017, which added the Civic Auditorium site to the boundaries of the redevelopment plan. That allowed for redevelopment bonds to, to allow for demolition of the building, which has been done, of course. This new amendment revises the redevelopment plan and establishes potential future transfer of fair value to a future developer of the project or of the site, which will come down the road. They'll be different. This actual redevelopment plan does not transfer the property. It's still in city ownership, but it sets up for the fair value transfer of the property moving forward. And there would also be other items such as tax increment finance, tax increment financing that is anticipated. Staff recommends approval. I acknowledge you have a public hearing. You can call for proponents. If you have any questions, let me know.
Okay. Do we have any proponents wishing to speak?
Good afternoon. Jay Klein, here representing White Lotus Group, 10404 Essex Court, Suite 100, Omaha, Nebraska, 68114. And I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Jay. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'm going to close public hearing. Did you need to add anything?
I don't.
Any comments, questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Kate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six zero.
Moving on. I think we'll skip agenda item number eight. I don't think anyone- No. Agenda item number eight, case C3-21-289. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the Skylark Development TIF redevelopment project plan. Location, 101 to 117 South Thirty-eighth Avenue. And Don, you're presenting.
Yes, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This project involves three parcels that are presently occupied by four buildings. The site will be cleared, and a new apartment building will be constructed. This is on South Thirty-eighth Avenue, just south of Dodge. The project will have a hundred thirty apartment units. Excuse me, a first-floor retail space and about two thousand seven hundred square feet of office space and workout facility. The three buildings on the site, three of the buildings on the site that will be demolished have official designation as historic buildings. They are contributing buildings in the Gold Coast National Register Historic District. A hundred twenty of the apartments in this development will be market rate units. There'll be ten units that'll have a bit lower rental rate, intended to serve as affordable units. The project adds density immediately adjacent to the Orbit Rapid Bus Transit Line that runs along Dodge Street. There'll be a hundred thirty parking spaces inside the structure, some bike parking, and another seven more parking stalls along South Thirty-eighth Avenue. The developer is Skylark Development LLC. It's managed by Brett West. Total project investment in the area is twenty-eight million dollars. They are asking for three million, eight-hundred thousand dollars in TIF support. The project has been approved by the TIF committee, and it comes to you with the planning department's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Thank you, Don. Jessica Thomas, 10250, here on behalf of the applicant. In continuation with Don's presentation, the project before you is a hundred and thirty-unit multifamily project located directly on Dodge and Thirty-eighth Avenue. What you see before you today is an image of the proposed project. The project will be approximately five stories high and will include two underground parking garages. So, we'll have a one-to-one ratio for parking. Along with that, we're going to have seven on-street parking units. Thought it was really important to understand that this piece is currently zoned as R8, so that's the highest density residential that we have here in Omaha. The project is intending to go under the TOD zoning. The TOD zoning was put in place just last year. The intent really being that this project site is located basically smack dab in the middle of two Orbit stations. And so, really, as you can see here today, and what I'm going to do is just switch this out. So, what this project will do, and on the right side is Thirty-eighth Ave., and on the left side is Dodge Street, is really provide a better pedestrian access that you don't have today. You're going to see an expansion of sidewalks. You're going to see an addition of landscape beds, bicycle units and everything. You're going to see a much safer space along Dodge, which will really encourage and add to that pedestrian desiredness that you see in the TOD zoning. And so, the intent and the hope really is that these residents are going to be able to utilize the investment that the city made in the Orbit system. As Don mentioned, the project is requesting TIF. And just to give you a better idea, exactly as to where those TIF dollars are being intended to spend, as you can see, all along the outer boundaries of the property, we've got paving improvements, we've got sidewalk improvements, we've got utility extensions. There's the alley that's located just directly on the east side of the property. You know, what that'll be is improved, and you'll see just general overall improvements of the site. As Don mentioned, you know, one of the things that this development group considered when doing this project was, how do we make this project accessible for a number of people? And so, the development team agreed to create ten affordable housing units. So, what that really means is that this project is not just available to those at the higher income levels. It's going to be available to mixed income rate levels. And so, the idea is really that we're going to be bringing people that would otherwise not be able to come to this type of project and live here, enjoy the amenities. The amenities are consisting of gyms, they've got office space, there's an intended coffee shop that'll be on there, and, you know, brand-new kitchen spaces, et cetera, all in there. So, knowing that there's a lot of discussion about this site and wanting to know about the history of the site, I've got Stephen Sykes with the development team to add a little bit more to the history and where, how they got here today. I don't know if you want any of these.
Thank you, Jessica. Stephen Sykes, 1023 North 64th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. Thank you to the planning staff and the planning board for the opportunity to share comments today. I'll share some brief, prepared comments, and then we'll be glad to answer any additional questions. Continuing on with the history of the site- Continuing on with the history of the site. At the acquisition in 2019 and 2023, of these four buildings were listed publicly for sale. While the zoning for this type of project has been in place for many years, at the acquisition, the intent of the ownership group was to continue to rent these converted, single-family-to-multifamily apartments to the public. To address the deteriorated condition of the buildings, the owners invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in deferred maintenance, boiler, heating repairs, roof replacements, et cetera. The continued development of the Blackstone District and the development of the Orbit Transit System, along with the City Council's approval of the TOD zoning overlay. And after being approached by other developers in the area with interest in a similar-type project, the ownership group, excuse me, began to consider this project. Since the inception... Excuse me, I'll change slides here. Since the inception of the project, the development team has sought to deliver a project that meets and supports the broader intent of the city's master plan for this area, principally to support the drive for increased urban density by creating 131 new apartment homes, the opportunity for increased ridership on the Orbit Transit System while providing adequate parking for the residents in the building, to support the continued growth of UNMC by providing housing for staff and students, providing an opportunity for affordable housing for a portion of the available apartment homes, to contribute to Midtown's ongoing development and support of Blackstone's burgeoning small businesses, additionally to increase walkability through Midtown for area residents and employees, which helps to achieve greater health accessibility and reduces the effects of pollution from reduced single trips, single-occupant driver trips. The development team has and will continue to conduct outreach and engagement to surrounding neighbors and residents. Neighborhood outreach began in late October of this year with mail or two residents within, residents and property owners within 300 feet of the proposed project site. We did have a title company vet that list and ensure that it was delivered by first-class mail. Additionally, we've held and attended meetings with the Executive Committee of the Blackstone Neighborhood Association, as well as with their general association membership. Both of those meetings were virtual. We've also reached out to the Neighborhood Association to the north, the Jocelyn Neighborhood Association, to present the project, to offer the opportunity to answer questions and have a conversation about it. And those opportunities will continue beyond today. I'll be the single point of contact. Anyone's welcome to contact me with any questions or interest in discussing the project at any time. Residents have expressed concerns about providing sufficient parking. Parking is at a premium in this neighborhood, as we know. Parking is also expensive to construct. The project could be designed with less than a one-to-one ratio in accordance with current zoning. The project team, however, looked at those options and considered the feedback from neighbors, and we've decided to maintain the one-to-one parking ratio in recognition of the desired balance for neighborhood concern about parking and supporting ridership for Orbit. Additionally, the project will provide secure parking for bike storage for residents. We did receive requests during the outreach process to install streetlights that are conform with the Acorn Light style in the rest of the Blackstone District, which we will do. Additionally, a request was received to allow neighbors to collect or acquire certain fixtures and design accents from these properties prior to their deconstruction. I'll speak to the deconstruction process in just a moment. And we'd be glad to accommodate those requests. Neighbors can, again, reach out to me for any details or similar-type requests. In an effort to minimize environmental impacts of constructing a project like this, the team is going to construct the building with the necessary electrical system to support installation of a solar array in the future. We're also going to utilize water fixtures that will reduce water consumption by approximately 30% when compared to a similar-type building or existing buildings that use current type of plumbing. Utility costs will reduce as a portion of rent due to the efficiencies of design and technology that are going to be incorporated into this project. In order to minimize materials going to landfill, the existing buildings will be deconstructed to preserve, for future use, the majority of the wood materials, flooring, roofing, windows, and decorative finishes in these projects. Of course, deconstruction will generate less waste overall going to landfills. We are in communication with our residents. The development team also owns the property management company that manages these properties, and we are in communication with the residents in these buildings. Additionally, we own other similar properties within a mile radius of these properties, and will work diligently to relocate them to other similar projects, excuse me, other similar properties in similar price ranges, should they be interested. And so in summary, I'll just mention that our ownership team has always sought to be responsible owners of these multifamily properties. Our hope is to continue supporting the city's broader goals of, within the master plan, through developing a high-quality, safe and attractive building that complements and supports the ongoing vibrancy of the Blackstone Neighborhood and businesses. I appreciate this opportunity and be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, Stephen, so with regards to parking, you're going to have some retail embedded within this project as well?
There are plans for a small coffee shop to be located on the northwest corner of this project.
That's the only retail you anticipate?
That is the only retail we anticipate. The office space that was alluded to earlier will be occupied by one of the businesses that is owned by the development team.
So where will they park?
We will utilize area parking, on-street parking. We'll also have the opportunity to use parking under the building. It's going to depend on opportunity.
I assume those indoor parking spots will be assigned to tenants, though?
That is the plan right now, is that those, parking stalls will be assigned. They'll be private parking, controlled access.
Right. All right. Do you anticipate not using all those spaces? Because if you're on a TOD line, that maybe more people would be moving in without having a vehicle? Or have you looked at that at all?
We would love to entertain residents at the building that are utilizing bike and bus transit system. Ultimately, it would reduce the pressure on those, on that one-to-one ratio. But after doing the research, we are under the impression and belief that a one-to-one ratio is an attractive ratio to both the support and health of the building and the occupancy, the residence, opportunity to park locally without over-parking.
Is there any difference in rents when somebody doesn't have a car? Has that ever been considered? I'm just curious if you don't bring a vehicle and you're not using a spot, is the rent exactly the same as if you do bring a car?
We are discussing that right now, whether the use of the parking space would be incorporated into the rent or if it would be a separate add-on or an à la carte-type add-on. And we haven't made that determination yet. We certainly feel that with our two-bedroom units, that there'd be more than one occupant, likely with the use of more than one vehicle. If that's the case, then, you know, we would need to entertain that selection of the parking spaces at that time, depending on how they're being utilized.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Stephen. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Hey, Stephen, can I ask you one more question on that? What are the rents that are being charged in those units that are existing right now, on average?
The range of rents that are currently being charged are between $600 and $750. These are market rents for these types of units, these conditional quality of buildings in this area.
And then the affordable units that you're going to have are starting at $700 or $800? I'm sorry, I can't...
The affordable units in the new building?
Yeah, yes.
Right, because everything we own right now is market rate for rent. We haven't determined an exact rent. What we're in discussions with planning staff is making available 10 units in the new building at an 80% of AMI for those applicants or those residents. And so the exact amount for that rent is to be determined, but that's where we are today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, opponents? We had a large number of letters come in in opposition. If you're here to speak in opposition, would you raise your hand so we get an idea? Do all of you want to speak? Or do you want to assign a couple people to? We're here, we'll listen to everybody. Just give us new information.
I think all of us want to go. I don't know any of these people.
Okay, come on forward. Yeah, and if you're planning on speaking, why don't you come on down at this time? Take a seat down below.
Hi, my name is Erin Higgins. I live at 329 North 35th Avenue in close proximity to this project in Gifford Park. I don't think anyone in Gifford Park was informed of this project, even though it's very close by. TIF funding is intended to jumpstart development in blighted areas. The three homes that Skylark Development wants to tear down on 38th Avenue and Dodge Street are not blighted. They are beautiful historic homes along the Gold Coast. I have spoken to someone who recently lived in one of these buildings, and she stated that they don't even need to be renovated, let alone torn down. These buildings should not be torn down. And if Skylark Development wants to build 131-unit, $220 million apartment complex, they should do it somewhere else. But the issue today is that you are all potentially approving a TIF funding project here. So let's talk about this project. Skylark Development is a business based in Pittsburgh since 2007. This company is led by someone named Agostino De Lucia. And as far as I can tell, they aren't really employing that many people at this point, so they're not going to bring jobs to our area. And in the last 14 years, as far as I can tell, it's about five people working there. Agostino does not live in our city. He does not have a vested interest in the future of Omaha. And he's trying, this company is applying for TIF funding to not pay property taxes. By allowing TIF funding for this project and allowing Agostino De Lucia to avoid paying property taxes on this $22 million project, you are stealing money out of the budgets of the City of Omaha, away from our city's services, like waste and snow removal. Approving this funding, approving this project is stealing money away from Metro Area Transit, Metro Community College, the Parks and Recreation Department, the Omaha City Library, the City Council Building Education Services Unit, the National Resource District, and the Omaha Public Schools District. They can afford to pay property taxes on this project, or they can't afford to do this project. Our libraries, our schools, all of the people, the children served by all of these public services do not deserve to have this money stolen away from them. And these homes aren't blighted. Approving TIF in this situation would be abhorrent. And these units aren't going to be affordable. I'm sorry, market rate right now is not affordable. Housing prices in Omaha have been increasing recently at an absurd rate. Rents are increasing, asking prices on homes are out of control. Part of this is because property taxes are rising because of development projects like this. But in larger part, the increased cost of housing in our city is due to companies like Skylark buying up properties all over the city and all over the country. Real estate development companies are fueling the unreasonable increase in housing in Omaha by buying up swaths of homes to rent out or try to flip or try to build projects like this. Would-be-first-time homebuyers in Omaha are being beat out again and again by people and businesses like this. Again, based out of Pennsylvania, they're not from here. They are creating a false scarcity by buying homes out from under families and individuals, actual Omahans. If you approve the TIF funding for this project, you are putting a stamp of approval on this practice. And finally, the building that they want to build is just like many others that have recently been built in this area. And to what end? Are any of the high-density projects in the Midtown area, none of which are affordable, by the way, at capacity yet? How many more small, sterile, empty apartments do we need in this part of town? Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Any other opponents wishing to speak? Just a second. Again, if you're going to speak, just come on forward. Take a seat up front here so it'll make things go a little quicker. And just a reminder, give us new information each time you speak, if you would, please. Go ahead, Nan. I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Alex O'Handlon. I live at 310 Lincoln Boulevard. So a little bit outside the neighborhood, but I did grow up right down the street. So there's my cred. I'm here today to go on the record to oppose not only the awarding of TIF for this development, but to oppose the development altogether. First, I want to say that I don't oppose the use of TIF to incentivize development in Omaha. I wholeheartedly support using TIF to incentivize sustainable developments that help us to house as many residents as possible. However, I oppose this development because I don't believe that it does this. I specifically take issues with four aspects of this development. One is its location. As the last speaker said, they're going to be tearing down three existing buildings. However, there's multiple empty lots and/or lots with crumbling buildings on them within six blocks of this development. There is the site of the old Travel Inn, the site of the old and crumbling Duds and Suds, the empty lot on 32nd Street across from Midtown Crossing. And if you go just a little bit further, there's the old site of the Clorinda, a site that in the past Mutual of Omaha has said they intended to prepare to be shovel-ready for a new high-density development. But instead of using the coordinating power of the Chamber of Commerce's Urban Core Initiative to direct prospective developers to these sites, Skylark Development has been allowed instead to cite its plans where three existing buildings stand with 21 affordable units. This is not what infill development looks like. Furthermore, the selection of this site for development will require the additional costs of demolition that would not come with other sites in the area. Two, the, I think, is copious amount of parking. One aspect of the TIF application states that this development will encourage the use of public transit, but with so much parking, I don't see how. I know this is like a different take than a lot of people take, but the city has spent time and money to introduce the transit-oriented development overlay. And this overlay is to encourage dense developments along transit corridors, which I know you all know. But the city has to take the next step to coordinate with developers in the early stage of the planning process to include less parking stalls in their development so that these developments actually take advantage of these transit corridors. If everybody that lives in these developments has a car, it's just going to lead to more traffic and less use of the Orbit. Instead of including so much parking in new developments, especially ones that are designed to appeal to people who work six blocks away, we need to take advantage and capitalize on other transit options available to residents, especially in our urban core. This excessive parking is another unnecessary cost for the developer that the city could help them to avoid. One way to reduce costs of developments, as well as support the Orbit route, is not only to require less parking, like the TOD does, but actively encourage less parking. Number three, I take issue with the lack of affordable housing. This proposed development will include 10 affordable units, and I do really appreciate that. However, it's going to remove 21 affordable units. This is the second development in little more than a year to tear down missing-middle affordable units in order to put up market-rate housing. What's more, the Sherwood Foundation's recent comprehensive housing assessment identified that the Dodge Street corridor is the best place for affordable housing because of its proximity to reliable transportation. Therefore, I think it's important that new developments along this route include higher percentages of affordable units. If we can cut the costs related to the demolition and excessive parking, that could help to aid in finding the money to develop more affordable units. Lastly, this development is unsustainable. With numerous parking spaces and emissions from both demolition and construction, as well as the lack of sustainable building materials, this development is not environmentally friendly. It's important that we take these concepts into account in the early phases of the design process when working with developers. Furthermore, this city still lacks a climate action plan, which we need to help guide new developments. With that, as a concerned resident, I ask that this TIF request be denied and that the city work with these developers to help them find a more suitable location and access the gap financing that they might need to include more affordable units in future developments. Thank you.
Any other opponents? Come forward.
Hi, my name is Riley White. I live at 1737 Park Avenue. So I'm outside of the neighborhood, but I am here today in opposition of the proposed development because I did grow up in the Cathedral neighborhood. I attended St. Cecilia's grade school from daycare all the way through eighth grade, and then went to Duchenne Academy from across the street. So I spent about two decades of my life surrounded by the Gold Coast homes. All of my best friends grew up in these incredible homes on 38th Street, dividing the neighborhood and my high school across. And the Clorinda was brought up, and I think it's important to mention in the context of what's becoming emblematic of one of my greatest frustrations with Omaha, which is a city which can't seem to decide what the hell we want to be. Everyone is convinced our vision is going to age better than the next guys. And if that's not apparent, look no further than 20 to 30 years ago when Jobber's Canyon was the salvage for Omaha. All of this development and the redistribution of the community and the numbers they throw at you, we have seven acres of green space to show that the neighborhood knows what's best, and why fix what's not broken? best, and why fix what's not broken? You can put a percentage of things like the fact that there's 10 low-affordable-income houses. Well, I'm sorry, I work at the public vendor's office, and I know for a fact that all of my clients who've been waiting for OSHA for months are not going to be saved by the 10 units that I can barely afford. I'm frustrated because, as stated, there's three perfectly good homes that are historically designated for a reason. If you look no further than a decade ago, we lost the Butternut Building to a fire. If you look at the Clorinda, if you look at the destruction of the Civic Center, if you look at 10 blocks of what could have been a canyon and is now delegated to a district, Omaha has a history of finding that there's, you know, you can add on to a neighborhood that's already thriving, you can inundate the parking and take advantage of a business crowd or a fad of Blackstone while basically destroying the neighborhood that built it up. I didn't come on with a specific list of bullet points, but more just a frustration because I've gone into the mansions in the Smith House on 38th Street in California and Webster overlooking the East Side. My friend Cece grew up in there, and you could go up to the Widow's Walk, and you can look down, the entire view of downtown. Yet, and that's an experience that's unique to the families that live in those neighborhoods, the friends that get to be around there. And even though they've sent, sold that home, I still walk past, and I got to be part of a tradition that's over 100 years old, that doesn't exist with new apartment buildings, that history doesn't exist with a community that is not, you know, providing homes to the kids that go to school in the neighborhood. It's not there for the people that grew up and sent their kids to Cathedral and have been there for generations and are being priced out because frankly, I'm sorry, I don't know if you've ever taken the Omaha bus line, but the people who are buying those units are not the ones who are going to be riding the number two downtown. And I tell you that because while I live on Park Avenue, about a mile and a half from the courthouse, it would take me 45 minutes by bus to get to work because I have to make it transfer. So even this revitalization of the Orbit, we're about two decades behind on. I'm sorry, unless you work on Dodge Street and you're going to take that every day, and you have one car per household, all of this is unrealistic, and I feel like I should also include some note for the fact that there's a Taco Bell right across, and I don't know if you've gone past midnight, but it's already backed up on Dodge Street in the neighborhood. You add 120 complex units, and anyone who's had like, I don't know, three beers in an evening, and that's like going to triple up the population of the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Let me remind everybody that while people are speaking, would you please remain silent in your seats? Come forward if you're going to speak, give your name and address.
My name is Kate Kraus. I live at 5122 Capitol Avenue, and mine is a statement of keeping what remains of the Blackstone District special. Preservation of historic districts enhances real estate values and fosters local businesses and keeps historic main streets and downtowns viable. There is value in uniqueness. If every building and every district looks the same without special character, there is less of interest to draw people to any specific area for the purpose of living or supporting businesses. Rehabilitating historic buildings is an investment in the future. Empty lots are available in the area for new building. There's no need to destroy buildings that are apart, excuse me, there is no need to destroy buildings that are part of the makeup of Omaha's old Gold Coast, and in fact, it would be detrimental to the area and why people want to be there in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Other opponents?
Hello, my name's Ariana Castagnon. I live at 628 Park Avenue, apartment 203, and I oppose this proposal as well. There are three issues that I really take to heart with this. Number one being the displacement of these affordable housing. Two, the demolition of this historic Gold Coast. And three, my, like, our money being messed with for this development. So number one, so in public nursing, primary prevention of homelessness is affordable housing, period. And, but that being said, if we, you guys say that you're going to give 10 affordable units, and like the other previous speaker has mentioned too, I can barely afford $800 myself for rent, so how are they going to afford that? And then you're still having to look at how those other 11 units are still, 11 units are going to be displaced somewhere else, so I really take issue to that. And by displacing, we put at risk, we put the people at risk for health disparities, poverty being like the main proponent of these health disparities and for people declining in health. So poverty is like number one, number one factor in decreasing health. Two, the demolition of this historic Gold Coast. If you're familiar with this area, you know there's about 10 other buildings that looks exactly like this. I can just point out one, like, right on the corner of 49th and Dodge. Like, what you guys showed me looks exactly like that. So yeah, there's really no uniqueness, nothing to like really proclaim Omaha as Omaha. And then, three, really it's, I say my money, but it's our money, like, our money being messed with for something like this. We don't need more housing like this, okay? We, what we need is more public housing. I worked by giving out like COVID vaccines in one of the public housings, and you could just see sewage just seeping out from the ceiling, from the third floor. And it's like, okay, guys, what are we doing here? How about we fix these, put my money, put our money into fixing and improving these people's lives? And I believe that everybody does have the opportunity to thrive, and therefore, people should have a house to live in. And yeah, just some other things, like, you know, something that was pointed out too, I'd rather have the money go towards like green spaces, another park or something, you know, or just like public housing. And secondly, as someone has mentioned too, high-income earners aren't really using these buses, let's be honest. Like, I hardly even use the bus, and it's just, the thing is, it's like, we, there's so many car dealerships too around here, and people will just go and, you know, you can just pick up a car like that. Anyway, the point is, is that it's, yeah, we have to fix the transit, transit system. I don't know, put in a rail yard or something. I don't know, something cool like that, something that will actually attract people to this city as well, so. But otherwise, yes, thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ariana. Any others want to speak? And please, let me remind you, give us new information. We've covered a lot of things so far.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenoff. It's really hard for some of us to give that new information. We're the public coming up on the time that we've taken off work to do this, so.
I understand.
I'm sorry, but I'm not going to be able to fine-tune this.
As I said at the beginning, we're here, we'll listen to all of you.
Marty Hosking, 104 South 37th Street, number four. I do appreciate the effort that Mr. Sykes and others have put into this. I think it's important for us to have these conversations. I think it's important for us to understand the future of the city. But the effort that you put in, as much as you put into it, does not automatically mean that you are deserving of this project. And I think that more importantly is the larger picture for our city. I wish them success. I'm all, all in favor of more density at the Orbit. I'm a huge supporter of that on development in the center part of the city. The thing is, this is just off the mark, and it's, it's really half-baked. And so I would encourage you, if I could say anything today to encourage you guys and gals, is to slow this down. This is our opportunity then. They presented the, the new threshold of growth in Omaha, the new frontier. Let's slow it down and make sure we do it right. And I think the number of points that were made by the lady in green especially are worthy of strong consideration. This, this is not going to be a big moneymaker for Omaha, and this is not going to improve the lives of most of the, of most of the general population of Omaha. This is a moneymaker for a company from out of town, and that's great. I wish them well. But we also have the responsibility to look at the entire needs of the city. And so, three points. First of all, the revenue that they claim to be increasing. We're, we're giving up for a period of about eight years, we're going to be giving up, we're going to be giving up, receiving any taxes at all on that property. Currently, we're, currently, we're getting $24,000 a year out of the property taxes on, on that property. But for the, to financing in order to cover that, it's going to take us about eight years to be able to getting, to get any sort of tax revenue off the property itself. So we're financing an out-of-town company to come in and do the development. That's great for them, but we're not Santa Claus, okay? We're a city of citizens that are very different, various different income levels and needs, not just something that would correspond with only those of generous income. Secondly, the historic nature of it, as one of my previous speakers spoke about, there's a sense that Omaha may be losing a sense of what it is, and who it is, and where it wants to be. The identity of Omaha is in the history that's here. If we tear, tear down historic, there's a reason we designated those properties as historic. So if we just wash that away, what are we really saying about what we really believe in and who we are as a city? That's important for us to note that, and besides the fact that these older properties are, are attractive to people who want a sense of place, who come to Omaha for a sense of place, and to this part of Omaha for a sense of place. And thirdly, in terms of equitable housing, I think this is not a project that would encourage equitable housing. And, and that is, you know, that's one of our biggest issues, is that we want Omaha to grow in a, where everybody feels welcome to live, where people can feel that they have access to these different nice areas of Omaha. This is not going to encourage that. It's very obvious. So we really need to slow it down and think about what we're doing. I mean, we're replacing 21 units of affordable housing with 10. Just that alone should make us say, well, wait a minute, what, what's going on here? How is this really, really benefiting us as a city? So I, and finally, I'd like just to say, I think a really good point was made about the parking situation, and that occurred to me too, just as I'm sitting here. I'm like, you want to encourage the use of Orbit, and yet at the same time, you're going to, you're going to provide parking for every unit. That doesn't make any sense. So there's, I think that alone should be a telltale sign that this is not a well-thought-out project. It's one that they expect to get passed very easily, as historically we have been able to do in Omaha. Let's slow this down, let's look at it, let's look at the real costs here and the real benefits. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marty.
My name is Patty Higgins. I live at 2809 Sumner Drive, Council Bluffs, Iowa, and I had to give someone a ride here today, that's why I'm here. I also graduated from the University of Nebraska Omaha with the Business Administration degree in 2019. And one thing I noticed about their presentation, which had a very nice architectural drawing of the building, is they didn't come forward and tell you exactly how much they're going to be charging rent. How much are they going to be charging rent? Because basically, this is a dormitory perhaps for University of Nebraska Med Center and Nebraska Medicine. That's who they stated that could possibly be renting these units. So they could walk to work, they could even probably save time by not driving in from the suburbs because parking is at such a premium in that hospital area. So what you really want to ask is, what are you going to be charging for rent? What are the market rents in this area right now? I know that one unit on 35th Avenue, they're paying $1,200 for a three-bedroom duplex. How much are they going to be charging? How much profit are they going to be making during this time where they're paying back this loan, the TIF? If you have 131 units, $1,500 a month, how much in profit are they going to be using your TIF financing ability? Just ask some deeper questions because you guys are more experienced and knowledgeable than I am. And I noticed they didn't say how much they're going to be charging in rent. So as a previous gentleman stated, think carefully. What are you going to do to Omaha? And who, who's this developer, how much profit do they get to walk away with? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Patty.
Good afternoon. My name is Alex Goswami, 427 North 41st Street. My last name is G-O-S-W-A-M-I.
What was your first name again?
Alex.
Okay.
Good?
Yep.
Okay. I'm an accountant, and I also served on the TOD Stakeholders Committee with, it was organized by the GM of the Planning Department, Kelly Johnston Dorsey. And I have an interest therefore, for the year that I served on that Stakeholders Committee and the development that happens on Dodge Street, and I'm thrilled that the TOD development passed. I am standing up here today, though, to oppose this development on 38th Ave and Dodge Street because of TIF financing and because I think that we can do better in Omaha. There was an article about population growth in the Omaha World Herald, I'm sure all of you saw, on Halloween, just a couple of days ago, saying there's population growth in the urban core. So we have this information over here. On the other hand, the UNO Center for Public Affairs study that's recent also showed that Nebraska is toward the bottom for brain drain, where we have some of the worst brain drain in Nebraska possible. The mayor's office talks about brain drain all the time. So I ask myself, how can those two things be true at the same time? That there's population growth in the urban core, but we're also experiencing a lot of brain drain? And so the best I can come up with is that it's the quality of development in the urban core that is causing people who are otherwise able to grow the property tax base and contribute to culture and contribute to making Omaha a great place to live are leaving the city. I call, I call 2021 the year all of my friends left. A number of people left Omaha because, because there isn't the diversity that they would see in other cities. There isn't a sense of place that they see in other cities. And I look at this development, the proposal for the development on 38th Ave and Dodge, and it's boxy. It looks just like the developments that you see in other cities that people criticize. Go to Austin, go to Portland, I travel a lot, go to Denver, Nashville, all of these cities are starting to look the same, and it would really behoove the planning board, especially on Dodge Street, which is our main thoroughfare. We've invested in Orbit. It is the, you know, the most traveled, probably, I'm guessing, us route in town, to really focus on creating something that looks beautiful for Omaha and challenge these developers. That's my feedback to you, is take the opportunity, since it is, there is growth in the urban core, and use this momentum that the Omaha World Herald talks about for growth in the urban core to stop brain drain and create development that makes it walkable and interesting for people who want to live in a city that has pedestrian access and transit. Really take that opportunity to challenge developers and don't settle. It's just like hiring an employee. You get applications, you think they're kind of interesting, they're not exactly what you want, so then you just hire somebody who might be okay, and you spend 10 years regretting it. The other issue, the other way to solve brain drain in Omaha is through diversity, and specifically, that means affordability. What makes for a thriving city, we've heard a million times, is diversity in incomes, diversity in employment levels, be that creative professions, technical professions. We need affordability and not TIF financing that shifts the burden to the public. In the case of 38th Avenue, the development will displace low-income tenants, as a lot of people have mentioned, and ask the public to finance their profit. Please say no to this. And I have to tell a story. There's this conversation that's happening about the 10 affordable units that are proposed to 38th Avenue Development, and on KETV recently, one of the developers for Skylark talked about, and actually, Mr. Sykes mentioned it too, is how the development company would help relocate the people who were there. And I think that comment is disingenuous, and there's not a way to hold them accountable to it. And the reason I think it's disingenuous is two things. One, the affordability of these units can't be cited right now, and it's not federally regulated or state-regulated. So we'd kind of just be taking their word for it. The second thing is something that I heard the developers themselves say at the Waypoint Church September 21st public meeting, of which we got one week's notice about. And so I asked the question about these affordable units that was in their disclosure and what the affordability standards are, and I was interrupted by someone else who was attending the meeting, who said, "These aren't going to be Section 8 houses, are they?" And he sounded kind of, you know, worried about that. And one of the developers, John, said, "No, they won't be Section 8 housing. We're going to find better renters for that area," and that the renters will probably just move down the street to one of Chris's developments and become his problem. This kind of commentary is reprehensible and also demonstrates that the planning board, the City of Omaha, needs real, tangible, affordable housing policies for this city. So I implore you not to settle for a development that looks like every other city and to really emphasize affordability. Otherwise, we have a number of problems, not the least of which is a homelessness crisis like you're seeing in cities like Seattle, Denver, Austin, et cetera, that have these large developments but no accounting for affordability. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Bree Fall. I live at 603 North 36th Street, which is just a couple of blocks down the street from this proposed development. Here's a new piece of information for you. There are 51 eviction hearings in Douglas County just today, and Douglas County cannot keep up with providing affordable and safe housing to meet the need of the people in our community. This plan proposed by Skylark would take away 21 affordable housing options in a prime area for accessible living conditions, and they wouldn't even make up for half of the affordable units lost. So instead of investing city money into more market-rate units that would tear down the type of housing that we're supposed to be preserving in Omaha, we should focus on keeping people in the homes that they have now. And I also propose that, the funding is running out for the Tenant Assistance Project, and we need more money to keep this program going to stop evictions happening in Douglas County. And everything that I wanted to say has already been said, so I'll just stop there.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good afternoon. My name's Kristin Dupree. I live at 16644 Jones Street. There have been a lot of comments that are great that have been made already, so I'll try to trim down what I was going to say. But it basically boils down to, you know, I don't think that the, the city should be subsidizing housing developments like this. I really wish we could see the city use TIF as a tool to address the very complex housing crisis that we're facing, and, and use it in areas that are actually blighted. We've talked about the apartment units that are existing on the, on this property. They're designated as historic, they're livable. We should keep that and build more, you know, multifamily complexes that can cater to the needs of our, of our neighbors that need affordable housing. One thing I'll point out is that, you know, it's, it's great that we are trying to attract and retain young professionals with these luxury apartments, but, you know, young professionals will eventually get married, have kids, want to buy a single-family house. We already have a massive shortage of single-family houses in our community. So it would really be great if we could figure out a way to address that, changing zoning requirements. You guys are the experts on the Planning Board, but I, I would love to see some of that happen. And I think everything else has, has really been said. I will echo the eviction hearings. I know there was over 50. Today, I volunteered with the Tenant Assistance Program just a couple of times so far, and it, it makes a huge difference, and that funding is extremely important. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Cheryl Weston, 1811 Immett Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I do not live in the area that it's being proposed, but I am so used to, because I live in North Omaha, and I say to those individuals who are in those 21 units, it's going to be displaced, you're now getting a taste of what we've been going through for years. And so many of the comments, and particularly, the first couple of people who spoke, it is our tax money. It is the money of the Omaha citizens that individuals from outside, not only outside of the area, but outside of the city, is being taken advantage of. And we are the ones that are suffering and paying for it. And when you say 21 units, and you're going to get, oh, a whopping 10, and this is 130 units? Somebody, it doesn't take a scientist to figure that out. That's not working. We're trying to get this Orbit, which I have watched, and there's like, maybe six people who are riding now, but you're giving one-to-one parking? How does that create more transportation unit on a bus? It's not. And to say, I was with this lady from Council Bluffs, and that was a big question in my mind, because as I said, from North Omaha, and I've seen the development that's coming that's supposed to be for affordable housing, my question was, they didn't say, how much are you going to rent these for? The only thing that was said, that the units currently are $600 to $700 a month. How much? How much, City of Omaha? How much is it going to take to bring back this uniqueness of Omaha, instead of all we are becoming are all these big units? We're losing areas, historical areas. And it used to be, you couldn't tear down, you couldn't take one of those historical units, and now you're allowing all of it to go away. I know it's not going to do any good, or at least I believe, because it's going to pass, and they're going to get it. So all I can say is, people, now you're getting a taste, and that old saying is, what goes around will come around to you, and that's what's happening now. All these other areas are facing what we are faced for long, and this is not going to help affordable housing. This is only going to be profitability for some developer outside of Omaha, Nebraska. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Jessica, Stephen, you want to come up and address? There's a lot of questions.
Thank you for the opportunity to address those questions. Thank you for the questions that came up. I'll do my best, I did take notes. I'll do my best, I took notes. So first off, I do want to make 100% clear, Skylark LLC is the applicant and the developer of this project, not Skylark Development LLC. We're not affiliated with Skylark Development LLC. I'm not sure how that name got on the agenda, but Skylark LLC was formed in Nebraska a few months ago. The five members of the entity are here in this room today. We all live in Omaha. There's no outside ownership or no outside entity. Stephen Sykes, 1023 North 64th Street, 68132. I'll try to move brief, or quickly through these. Regarding parking, it, it's an issue that we've discussed extensively with the, the development team, the Planning Department. We conducted a market study to try to help us find what that right balance was. We feel like we've landed on it, but certainly, we're going to continue to, to look at it. But this is where we are as of now. Just to also clarify, these three residences that were built as single-family homes, converted to multifamily apartments, they are not state or federally designated. Just to be clear, that, that nomenclature is important. They are referenced in the Gold Coast Historic District Plan as reference for their architectural style. So two of the three are referenced in that document. Let's see, I'm just moving through to try to be efficient here. I want to speak to deconstruction, so we will work with Johnson Deconstruct, and the materials that are, that are deconstructed by hand from these properties will be provided to Habitat for Humanity, who will provide them to the public for reuse. We do, we are proud of the fact that we'll be creating jobs, both during the construction, an opportunity for work, and for those folks that will end up working at the property, working in the coffee shop. So just an element that I wanted to bring up, because it's something that's important to us as well. We, it was discussed, so market rents for apartments like this in the community today typically range between $900 and $1,600, depending if they're studios, or two-bedroom, or larger apartments. This project won't receive its certificate of occupancy for a couple of years. So what we do know is that we will be competing with local similar projects, or we would anticipate that the market rate portion of the building would be consistent with those other market rents that are, that are around today. In terms of the relocation of residents, the comment was made that, that it's not important to us. That's a summary, my words, but I just want to state for the record that it's very important to us. We do own and operate the management company that these residents utilize to support them in their, in their midtown living. So we 100% want to work with them, and will commit to working with them, and would be glad to codify that in a document if that's important, and if that's, excuse me, it's important, but if that's necessary, we'd be glad to do that. That's all I've got. If there's anything else I can address, I'd be glad to.
Any additional questions for Stephen? Nope. Thank you. Eric, did you want to address, quite a bit was, quite a bit of comments about?
Yeah, no, I'd like for Don, I'd like Don Seaton to come up to give a, a very brief description on how tax income financing works, how the current property rate is continued to be paid as, just, you know, some of the basics, just for the benefit of the audience.
I picked up on a few of those comments, and was thinking about coming back up. The base value of any TIF project, its current taxable assessed value, taxes are paid on that, and after the TIF project is completed, taxes continue to be paid at that level on that value. So the taxes that are being paid today on this project, they will continue to be paid at the same rate. It was the increment, the new increase, that gets put back into the project.
Don, there seems to be a lot of confusion from people, thinking that the city is giving money that we could be putting into parks, or affordable housing, or, 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 you know, that, that their property taxes are being raised because of these projects. Could you address that as well?
That's a common misperception on the TIF program, that there's some big bucket of money in the Finance Department to give out TIF money. The money, the TIF money that gets invested into a private development is money that is generated by the development itself. If the development didn't happen, the TIF money for it would not happen.
So, so explain to people, where does that money come from? Do they take it out of a loan from a bank, or?
For their projects.
Okay. When you redevelop a site like this, and you increase its property value, the taxes on the increased new value, over and above the base value, those taxes go back into the project. Typically, that's done, the developer will get a standalone TIF loan from a bank, and they'll use the tax payments on that increment to service that bank loan.
Can, can you give them the period as well?
Say again?
Give them the period as well, for how long that happens.
It's a 15-year period.
To which point it then goes back to a normal taxation?
After 15 years, the entirety of the valuation is taxable, and the money is, the proceeds after the 15 years go back to the school districts, county, special districts, the city. We've had conversations with these other taxing jurisdictions, and they all recognize that TIF is a valuable program for promoting redevelopment in, in core areas of the city, the older areas of the city that are slower to redevelop, and that it is a good investment. And you look at, you know, 15 years worth of TIF project, it's kind of like a conveyor belt. New ones come on, new ones come off, but the tax increase, tax revenues continue to increase. It should also be noted that the rental rates for this project, that is a required question on our TIF application, it was included in your staff report, included in the materials from the applicants, and made available online.
Is that good, Jeff? Good.
That explanation didn't make any sense.
You can't?
I can say.
No, please don't, don't talk, and we've closed the public hearing. Thank you, Don. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Just a couple of comments. First of all, the public testimony today was very good. Very much appreciate you taking the time out of your day to come and, and, and provide the testimony. You know, sometimes common sense prevails, and sometimes you look at these sayings and say, boy, this doesn't make sense, or this doesn't make sense. Common sense always makes sense. So I really appreciate the, the, the comments that were made today. And what kind of struck me a little bit, that I really didn't think too much about at the time, when I read through the report, was we're creating what we say 10 affordable housing units in this new project, but we're really giving up 21, as you guys testified on today. And I think that's important. I think that's extremely important. And I look at what the estimated affordable housing estimates are that you've, that we've got in the application here. 825 a month for studio, 950 a month for nine, for one bedroom, and 1,200 a month for a two-bedroom. And then I think about the rents that are currently being paid, which I think Mr. Moore asked a question of, and, and they're somewhere between 500 and 700 dollars a month. And it's getting harder and harder to find any kind of housing at those rates today. It just is. You can't find them. So that kind of struck me a little bit. I don't know where I'm going to go with my vote yet, to be quite honest with you on that, but I think we really need to, and, and you, and you brought it up, I think we really need to, as a city, look at this, and, and look at it very intently, and say, what are we really trying to do in order to create better access to affordable housing? I wasn't a big fan of this project when I first looked at it, for a lot of the reasons, honestly. And the historic district as well. And we look at those buildings that they're replacing, with Section 1, and I like the character of the buildings. I like the character. I like the character that, that brings to the City of Omaha. And, you know, and I, and I'm a pro-development guy. I, I love developments, but I hate to give up the character of the city. And so I'm conflicted in, in this, to be quite honest with you. I understand that development's great, and, and I'm not opposed to the TIF part of this at all, because I get it, and I understand what it's going to be used for, but I just, I'm conflicted just because of, of, of all the things that were brought up here, and just my own beliefs, I guess, in, in living in the city for 66 years now. And that's kind of where I'm at. So I just wanted to make that comment publicly, because I appreciate all of the testimony that was here today, I really do. And I think we all do, and it's just not me. I know we all do. And, you know, somebody mentioned, you know, we didn't ask the tough questions. Well, you know, some of the information's in the, in the report that, that you brought up anyway, so we have access to this information, just want you to know that, anyway. We do try and ask the tough questions. But I'm sorry, you know, I just kind of went on a little bit with editorializing there, but that's just kind of how I feel at this point in time. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else have a comment?
I'd like to add a little bit as well. You know, the reality is, this is a conflicting project, just like Mike mentioned. You know, we all would like to see more affordable housing in our projects. I, I would like to point toward projects that are ongoing, even on the list of, on the agenda today, and in agendas of past meetings. So you see how much affordable housing we are approving every month, and how many projects are coming through the pipeline, and, you know, projects that are 100% affordable housing. Many multifamily projects have been approved just in the year that I've been on the board. So it's a balance that we have to strike all the time, and I think that's why the opposition that was here today is so important. I would encourage people to continue to pay attention to these projects, so that we are striking that right balance. I just would like to say that I have seen some great projects this year that are either 100% or above 70% affordable units, and we really applaud that, and we encourage it at the city level and as citizens as well. So just wanted to add that.
I'd like to just, I'd, I'd just like to add to what Mr. Sotolongo said. Well, that's, that's only a little part of it, that whole point.
Yeah.
Right. Anyway, the-
Just that, what you have in your-
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not a monthly meeting that we go by that we don't have some affordable projects. And so you can't look at one project and think it's going to solve everything for everybody. And, and that's just the facts. And so these are, this particular project is of great concern, because we see those numbers, but when you look at the aggregate of everything, this city does have a very significant goal of trying to resolve affordable housing issues. It's very difficult, especially in today's world with the cost of things, to try to do any development of anything new that, that can be affordable. We all know what's happening with the costs. And, and so, and I'm conflicted as well, just with, when you see, you know, nice old buildings. It's nice to see them be able to retain. But on the other hand, we also have an infrastructure in this city that has to remain healthy. And if you don't allow a city to grow and improve, you lose your tax base, and ultimately, it gets to be worse and worse and worse. And so the city also has a goal to try to, and to incentivize all kinds of projects that can be done in an area that's being redeveloped through the use of the TIF mechanism, which doesn't cost anything out of your pocket. All it does is delay when the city gets the, the taxes for the improvement. As Don was saying, the taxes that are existing right now continue on. So nothing is, is taken out of anybody's pocket, it just delays the time when the taxes are then imposed on that new property. And so that's, that's the thing that we have to balance up here all the time, when we have these, these projects come forward. And that's, that's, I mean, that's our job. We're going to have to make the decision between it. We have a, we have invested in, in the, the transportation down Dodge Street, and we want to be able to have increased occupancy of that corridor, to make sure that that- increased occupancy of that corridor, to make sure that that, the people will use that, that investment. And this is one of the mechanisms we can, mechanisms we can use that. When a developer comes in and wants to risk their money to be able to put a development forward, that can, can help us with the revitalization of our, of our vital corridors. That's all I have to say.
Dave? Any other comments, questions? Eric?
Yeah, just a couple of points to add, that, just to clarify, these are contributing buildings to the Gold Coast National Registered District. If, if the owners of the property so chose, they could go tear down these buildings today with a wreckage permit. There are no protections in place as a contributing building. I believe there are over three-hundred-and-fifty contributing buildings in the Gold Coast Registered District. In fact, there's been two other TIF cases in the past handful of years that have been approved by City Council that involve tearing down contributing buildings. Just to echo a little bit of what Mr. Rosacker said about TOD line and Orbit, this area was not excluded from TOD. There were other low-density residential, very consistent zoning that were excluded from the TOD boundaries. I just wanted to make that, point that out, that this area is and should have further development that increases the development, the density, so that we can maximize that very important transit investment. So, unless you have any other questions for city staff, city recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
I'll vote yes. I'm on record for my comments with my comments, but I'll vote yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six-zero.
We'll move on to, let me wait a second here. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Nine, KC three-dash-twenty-one-dash-two-ninety. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha, request approval of the Saddle Creek Voightman TIF redevelopment project plan. Location, six-oh-nine South Forty-Eighth Street. And Bridget, you're presenting, and making a lot of noise.
Somebody is.
Making sure we're awake. Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. I don't know if there's air blowing, but, so the Saddle Creek Voightman TIF redevelopment project plan is highlighted in blue on this aerial. So here's Saddle Creek Road, South Saddle Creek Road, and here's Leavenworth. I think I have maybe, here's a close-up view aerial of the site. It's an approximately three-acre site on the southern tip of the former Omaha Steel Castings industrial site that plans to be transformed into an innovation hub that envisions commercial space and community amenities. The development team, which is a portion of the development team, Greenslake Development is here with their architect. The other portion of the development team is Cobal and Company, I hope I pronounced that right, out of Denver. Both of those two development companies were selected by UNMC to redevelop this site. So what I wanted to do is show you at least a couple of pictures of the existing, the two existing structures on the site. This red brick building is a picture of the southern, southwestern building, and then this picture is a picture of the northern building of the site. So these two existing industrial structures, built in the early nineteen hundreds, will be repurposed for long-term office tenant rentals, co-working space, and an event hall and a market hall. The northern building, which is the one you see here, will be converted, I think earlier in the pre, pre-planning board meeting I said will become, but it will be converted into a three-story building with office space. And then, this southwest building will remain and have, of course, some interior retrofitting. Then there will be a, an addition. So that's the site plan, I'll come back to that. So here are some renderings of the elevations. So there will be a new one-story addition that will be added to connect the two buildings. So this is the northern elevation. Here is the southern elevation, so you can see the northern elevation, that's that one story that will be converted into three actual stories on the inside of the building. The red brick building, and then here's the eastern elevation, and then the western elevation. And then if I show you the site plan. So, these are the buildings I spoke of, so the southern building, and then the northern building. There will be ninety-four parking stalls that will also be a part of the project, public improvements that will be paid by the project, two new streets. In the pre-meeting, I stated one would be on the east side, and I was corrected, so one will be on the west side, and the other will be on the north side. So those are the new streets that the, this project will pay for and install. There will also be landscaping, new sidewalks, the creation of parallel and diagonal on-street parking. The site is currently zone GI ACI two, and proposes to opt into the TOD dash-one MX, mixed-use overlay zoning. Let's see if I have any more. Nope, that's it. So the, the TIF eligible costs are, total TIF eligible costs are about a little greater than twenty-six million. For this particular project, we're focusing on the rehabilitation costs and the public improvement costs, which total about twenty-one million that the project will focus on. So it shows there's more than enough TIF eligible costs to cover the amount of TIF they're asking for. Job creation, there will be three full-time property management positions that are proposed, and then another approximately six-hundred-and-seventy full-time projects, and that number is arrived based on using an estimate of one employee per a hundred-and-fifty square feet of office space, minus about a twenty percent load. So, quite a few office, or full-time jobs will be anticipated as a result of, you know, the new startups and other office relocations to the area. The job types that are projected are research and development, marketing, janitorial, food service, professional services, and other general management positions. The total amount of the TIF is approximately eight-point-one million, and the total investment is a little over fifty-four million. The project complies with the Community Development Law and the TIF program, and is in compliance with the master plan by promoting creation of, a creation of a full range of jobs, encouraging private investment in infill redevelopment, developing underutilized property, and creating a more attractive physical environment and promoting pedestrian-friendly streetscapes, particularly at this site. The TIF committee has given their approval, and with that, I'd ask for your approval and turn it over to the development team.
Thank you, Bridget.
Hi, Jay Lund, Greenslake Development, thirty-eight fourteen Farnham Street. Bridget summed it up pretty nicely there. Very excited about this project, to be, continue to partner with the Med Center, and expanding their campus to the west, and being a part of their mission and their goal. If you, I'm sure you all keep up with their ambitions, and they're very, potentially incredibly transformative for Omaha, so, so excited to be a part of that. Excited to be partnered with Cobal and Company, they're based out of Denver. This is going to be their first investment made outside of the state of Nebraska. They have extensive development background in Denver and the whole Front Range area. And this project in particular is going to be based off of a co-working concept that they built in the Rhino neighborhood called Catalyst. So it's a, it's a vetted, it's a vetted concept that they've learned a lot of hard lessons and good lessons out there that they're going to bring to Omaha, and so we're excited to bring that to campus. This building, I can say, I've had an involvement with, with the Med Center for at least, at least five, six years, helped them buy it. At one point, was strongly advocating for them not to tear it down, so I'm happy that that happened. It's going to be, it's going to be a very challenging project. Saving these old buildings is, is not easy, and, but I will say, I think that the, the end product here is, it will be one of, if not the most unique office building in Omaha. You can kind of point to maybe Millwork Commons, or the Mastercraft is some examples, but we think that this building is, is going to be incredibly unique for Omaha and for the region, so excited about it, happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Jay. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Hi, Alex O'Handon, thirty-ten Lincoln Boulevard. Actually, I don't, I'm not specifically an opponent, but I am still involved with the Saddle Creek Corridor Neighborhood Association. And we had been meeting with Brian Spencer from UNMC back in February and throughout the spring about this development, and at that time, we were told that the developers hadn't been picked yet, and I think that was true. But we had asked to be reached out to when the developers were picked, and we did go through the process of getting feedback from neighbors. So we had a survey that we gave to UNMC that they said they would pass along to developers, with about twenty-some responses. Most people are in support of this. I know how, I'm not going to say I'm an expert on development, but I understand how development works, and I know that, like, projects change. And so, when we talked to Brian, there was talk about, like, maybe there'd be housing. We talked about the need for affordable housing. And also, a lot of the things that came through on that survey were really about walkability. The Duke folks probably remember, went up on Forty-Sixth and Dodge about three years ago, and at that time, we were working with developers to get a pathway from Forty-Sixth Street to Saddle Creek to create safer walkways and a connection between Dundee and Blackstone. That wasn't able to happen then, and the developers had told us that they wouldn't do a public pathway. So we brought that up with Brian, and that's something that we really wanted to see in this development, was not just greater, like, biking and walking accessibility, but we wanted to specifically see a connection between Saddle Creek Corridor, Dundee area, and the Blackstone area. So my parents were divorced when I was younger, I also grew up in this area, and so I've walked through this area quite a bit, and I think that, I like the ideas around this. I really think that creating specifically, like, engaging the neighbors is one thing I would love to see before moving forward. And then also, I'd like to see more emphasis. We were told that there might be, like, a overpass over Saddle Creek to the UNMC campus that would be usable and accessible to not just UNMC, folks that work at UNMC, but also residents. And I'm just not hearing that in this, so I guess, yeah, I would ask for a layover until the neighbors have been contacted. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Jay, did you want to come up and name an address again?
Jay Lund, thirty-eight fourteen Farm Street. Alex would love to sit down and talk to you some more about it, and actually really appreciated your comments during the last section as well. We're excited that this is a part of TOD. We have, we have Vertus Group on our team here that is going to be doing a active, active commuting and active transportation consulting on the project. Couple other things, housing, I think we're hoping will be future phases on the, you know, twenty-five-plus acre site. That's just not this particular parcel. And the bridge over Farnham, or bridge over Saddle Creek, I would love that. Let's advocate for that together. I think it's, you know, a part of the administrative building towards the, you know, northern part of the site as well. One other shameless plug here for TOD, as a member, eight years in running, a member of the Metro Transit Authority Board, there were some misnomers about the Orbit system in the last testimony, and I'm kind of proud to report that we average about fifteen-hundred riders a day on that line, which is double what the current number two was, was holding on Dodge Street, so. More than six.
Thank you, Jay. Any additional comments, questions? Eric?
Yeah, obviously, what is taking place on this site is wonderful for the area. You know, we'd encourage the development team to continue to meet with the surrounding property owners and neighborhood groups. And so, we definitely encourage that to continue. Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove six-zero.
Agenda Item Number Thirteen, KC ten-dash-twenty-dash-two-fifty-one, KC ten-dash-twenty-one-dash-three-hundred, KC twelve-dash-twenty-one-dash-three-oh-one. Applicant, WDC Investments nine LP, request preliminary plat approval of South Farm Replat Three, a subdivision outside city limits with a waiver to Section fifty-three-nine-four-A lot depth, along with rezoning from DR to R-five and R-six, and approval of a major amendment to the Neighborhood Conservation and Enhancement Plan. Location, northwest of one-hundred-and-forty-fourth Street and Applied Parkway. Larry?
Yes, Mr.?
You've been waiting a little bit.
What's that?
You've been waiting a little bit.
Yeah, just a little bit. I kind of forgot why I was here. Kidding. Mr. Chair members of the board, Larry Jovan, one-hundred-and-fourteen-forty, Western Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is a preliminary plat rezoning from DR to R-five and R-six, and also this major amendment to the NCE Neighborhood Conservation and Enhancement Plan. I wanted to show you kind of the overall site. This is, this is showing, how do we go? Whoops. So anyway, this is obviously the former Boystown site. This is the South Farm site. So this is Pacific Street, this is one-hundred-and-forty-fourth Street, and the property that we're developing is in this location right here. It's about twenty-two, a little over twenty-two acres. We're looking to subdivide it into a hundred-and-forty-three lots and seven outlots, and it will be a mix. Let me zoom this in a little bit, so you can kind of see. It'll be a mix of apartments in this particular area here, and then there's attached townhomes that are in yellow here, and then the rest is all single-family detached houses. This is a gated community. There's a clubhouse that will serve the entire community as well. There's a number of park areas, as you can see, and various outlots. As far as the mix, there's two-hundred-and-twenty-five total units within this area, and there's seventy-four detached, single-family houses, and there are, which will be a combination probably of one and two stories. The actual mix at this point is unknown, but we're at the preliminary plat stage, and they still haven't quite developed their various product mix. There are single, there are sixty-eight attached townhomes in yellow here, and then there are eighty-three flats, which are two-story stacked buildings that will be the multifamily component of this particular development. There's a tremendous amount of parking. I think the parking ratio is three-point-one-five parking spaces per unit, so there's just, if you look at just the townhome and the single-family detached houses, I think there's three-hundred-and-forty-four garage spaces, there's a hundred-and-ninety-nine driveways, and there's a hundred-and-sixty-six parking spaces on the street. parking spaces on the street. These streets are all going to be private plazas and courts, so they're built to public standards, but they will be owned and maintained privately within this particular development. As far as the multifamily, they have about sixty-two garages there, so again, plenty of parking. This shows just some examples potentially of the architectural style and building elevations for the various product mix. Again, this is all conceptual, they're still working through this, and, and there's an Architectural Control Committee with Applied that actually will also make the final decision with the developer here as to how the townhomes and the single-family detached houses and the multifamily two-story stacked product will look with materials and elevations. We did have a neighborhood meeting, I think we had five neighbors, it was last Wednesday, they all liked it, actually, they showed up and they said it was very well received, and so that was good. We've reviewed the recommendation report, we find the same acceptable, and we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Are the townhomes going to be rentals, or are they going to be purchased?
Actually, the entire development is rentals.
Really?
So yep, it'll all be owned by one entity and will be leased in its entirety.
So is, is there going to be a, is this like a condo regime?
No, they're, they actually all sit on their own individual lots, except for the, except for the multifamily component, you know, that obviously is, is one lot, but otherwise, all these townhomes will sit on their own lots, the detached single-family will also sit on their own lots as well, and again, it's gated, so it's kind of a new product type to the City of Omaha, but I think it'll be very nice.
Who pays for the maintenance, then?
Uh, the landlord.
Who takes care of the maintenance?
Yeah, the landlord, so everything will be taken care of by the landlord, there's a leasing office inside the clubhouse, so it will be owned and maintained by the landlord.
So those, I'm just curious about those, I can't quite see that picture at the bottom, those, the single families look like they're little shotgun, little shotgun, shotgun two-story houses?
Yeah, they, I mean, it kind of looks like the Little Italy kind of development down there, except obviously here in West Omaha, but, but again, this is conceptual, and these are just some ideas that they're throwing around. They haven't developed, you know, what the leases will be on a monthly basis, that'll be based upon the cost of, you know, what will it cost to actually put in all the public improvements, well, I should say, private streets, but built to public standards, as well as the grading, and then also the, you know, cost of building the units themselves. So they haven't worked through all that, but my understanding is they're going to be working on that between now and, and obviously, the final plat coming back to this planning board.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions? Eric.
Yeah, so as Larry described, you know, there's some, some unique characteristics, a nice mixing of housing types that we are definitely supportive of. I don't think there's anything specifically I need to point out from the recommendation report, if you do have any questions, we have some modifications to the NCE plan, but we'll continue to work with the development team on that. You know, it's kind of complex when you have these, you know, alleyways and private streets, and so we'll definitely continue to work with them. So unless you have any questions, staff recommends approval of the waiver to Section fifty-three nine four A lot depth, approval of the rezoning from DR to R five and R six, approval of the major amendment to the NCE plan subject to submittal of an acceptable NCE plan document prior to forwarding to city council, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the twenty-two conditions in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the waiver to Section fifty-three nine four A lot depth, approval of the rezoning from DR to R five and R six, approval of the major amendment to the NCE Neighborhood Conservation and Enhancement Plan, subject to submittal of an acceptable NCE plan document prior to forwarding this request to city council, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the following twenty-two conditions laid out in the report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six zero.
Thank you, Larry. Agenda item number nineteen, case C ten dash twenty-one dash three oh seven, applicant, Ryan Basie, request rezoning from R eight to GO property is located in an ACI two overlay district. Location, thirty-seven seventeen and thirty-seven twenty-one Dodge Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hi, I'm Ryan Basie, thirty-seven thirty-seven Dodge Street. I'm just here to answer any questions, been a long day, but just changing the zoning there, thank you.
Okay, any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Comments, questions? Ryan, I mean, Ryan.
Eric. Yeah, so this is a rezoning for a surface parking lot that would accompany the adjacent office building to the west, because the site has split zoning, it requires one base district. The master plan is supportive of the rezoning from R eight to GO. There is a building permit that has been submitted that has been placed on hold to allow for this rezoning, as well as a few other items that will need to be done, including an administrative plat to combine the property into one full lot. There was a site plan review that was done earlier this summer in June, so there, I believe there were some changes that were needed to the site layout as a result of that, that review, and it should be noted that there has been gravel placed down on the lot, there should not be any vehicle parking on that gravel, so I don't know if there has been, I just wanted to put that on the record. Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six zero.
Agenda item number twenty-two.
Thank you.
You bet. Case C ten dash ninety-six dash two sixty-one, applicant Ted Grace, one forty-eight Place LLC, request approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use district development plan for All Tech Business Park. Location, northwest of one hundred and forty-eighth and D Streets. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hi, Reagan Pence with Lamprey and Neerson on behalf of the applicant, one four seven one zero West Dodge Road, zip six eight one five four. We're asking for the approval of a major amendment to include multifamily residential in a development that includes currently office and light industrial. We have worked closely with the city on a site plan, along with some preliminary architectural elevations, landscaping plan, parking, and we have also provided a traffic analysis in working with Public Works, Urban Design and Public Works, and Urban Design and Planning, it's our understanding that we have met the requirements and they are in approval of the project, so I'm here to help answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Comments, questions from the board? Eric.
Yeah, so this is a good project, fills a vacant site for over twenty years, you know, this mixed-use district has been around for a while. We talked about justification for the number of units at the intersection in the pre-meeting, we can discuss any of that if you have any further questions, but we think it's a good use of the property. The traffic study analysis or update has been provided, and it's been determined that Public Works has concurrence, is my understanding, based on the emails I saw exchanged, that this is well below the established TRIP generation dating back to the original traffic study, or one of the amended traffic studies back in two thousand and four. So there's just a few finalization of details with the mixed-use amendment that'll be needed before proceeding to city council, but staff recommends approval of the major amendment to All Tech Business Park mixed-use development agreement subject to the two conditions in the recommendation report prior to city council.
Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the major amendment to the All Tech Business Park mixed-use development agreement subject to the two conditions outlined in the recommendation report prior to forwarding the request on the city council.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, six zero.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for waiting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ted, good to see you.
Likewise.
Um, we got, need a motion for the minutes from last month's pre-meeting and public meeting.
So moved? Second.
A motion and a second for approval. Debbie, will you record the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved.
Before I ask for a motion on the adjournment, I just want to say, as always, this board conducts itself very well, and especially for agenda item number eight today, the way everybody listened and, and the comments that were made, and the sincere comments and thoughts, it was tremendous, it represents our board very well. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote?
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved.[1773.14]